Please rise and salute the flag.
Counselor Matusky is unable to be here tonight due to a family commitment and Counselor McGlaughlin as well. He is recovering well from his procedure and he'll be back soon. Please read item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Right. Item number one, this order to accept the City of Everett Investment Policy Statement.
Mr. Chairman, do we have someone here to explain to us?
Yeah, we have our Chief of Staff and CFO here.
What this is all about, a quick explanation?
Yeah, if you just want to explain it, gentlemen, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I'm wondering if we couldn't, you know, I'm pretty sure we all read these here, but they're kind of long and lengthy and everything. And what I'm wondering about is, why do we have to do them? Because if we had them before, what has changed? I know that Massachusetts said something about it, but what has really changed to make us want to write this stuff? Because this is so encompassing. You need to be an attorney to understand this, you know? And I read it a long, long time. And if you see my notes, you'll understand why I read it a long time. But I wonder if you could tell us, why are we having to change this? Why is this becoming so complicated?
Absolutely.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Through the Chairman.
And actually, if I may, the item before the committee right now is just item number one. But to address your issue, I'd like to address all three at the same time, because they're all interrelated.
Take them collectively.
Take them all collectively.
Motion made in seconds to take items one, two, three collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
All right. Item number two is to accept the City of Everett's Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Investment Policy Statement. Item number three is the order to accept the City of Everett Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust.
Thank you. Well, there are three items in front of you. The first item on the list, number one, is a general investment policy statement for the City of Everett. Item number one is not a requirement. Item number one, in my opinion, is considered a best practice. Mass. General Law exists which places a lot of duties and responsibilities on the city, specifically the city treasurer, as to what they can and can't do, what they shall and what they shall not do. In this past year, Massachusetts enacted a new law that was sweeping over a number of finance-related laws here in the Commonwealth. It was called the Municipal Modernization Act. And as such, they streamlined and modernized a number of the Mass. General Laws affecting finance related to cities and towns. Number of other changes, but I'm only going to be talking about the finance changes. So, they, some of the investment laws, they did change, but due to those changes, they actually didn't require the city to do anything other than to make sure that we're adhering with Mass. General Law. One of the things that I've done since I've been hired by the city is I've taken a look at all of the financial policies and procedures citywide. When I took a look at what the changes were in the Municipal Modernization Act, I went line by line and how it impacted the city. Obviously, one of the areas was in the area investments. So, I started to take a look at the city's investment policy. The city has never had a formal investment policy. In my opinion, that's not considered a best practice. We should have a formal investment policy on hand. So, as such, I went through and I wrote the city's investment policy, item number one that you have in front of you. And in a nutshell, what the investment policy says is that it references the specific laws the city must adhere to, and it states that the treasurer is required to make sure that the city is fully adhering with all the Mass. General Laws. So, because of the changes in the laws, I started taking a look at various areas. I realized that the city didn't have a policy. It's not good to not have a written policy, in my opinion. So, I wrote the policy. I adopted the policy and implemented it upon approval by the mayor. I then went through the bonding process and started the process with our bond rating agencies and our financial advisors. And as you're aware, the city received a bond rating increase to its highest rating that the city's ever received. It's actually just one step below a AAA rating, which is the highest rating any municipality can receive, including the federal government. And as I went through those discussions and as Kevin O'Donnell and I were having those discussions with the bond rating agencies, we were highlighting a number of the changes and improvements that the city has been continually making. Some of the areas that I had discussed as part of our best practices was I formalized an investment policy, of which they thought was a great idea, and they agreed that it was a best practice. But what I was hearing from our outside auditors, as I shared these policies with them as well, and the bond rating agencies, they said, you know, you're putting all of these great mechanisms in place. What we would like to see is that it's not just you as a department head, you as a CFO, that are embracing these policies. It sends a message if city council, if the mayor and the city council are embracing these and adopting these as the city's formal policies, which, again, basically are just best practices in making sure that the treasurer and everybody involved in these processes fully comply with Mass. General Law. So, again, that one was not required, but in my opinion, it was a best practice, and it's the way the city should continue to improve. The other two, the other two deal with an OPEB Trust Investment Policy, which is extremely similar to the first investment policy, but there are terminology differences because it specifically relates to an OPEB Trust, which leads me into item number three. A number of years ago, the city council voted to set aside funds as part of free cash to put into an OPEB Trust Stabilization Fund. And that was what the city's intent was, to deal with and address that unfunded liability. Well, one of the changes in the municipal modernization law was that it said the city can do one of two things. If a city has adopted an OPEB Trust Fund as, under a stabilization law, the way our city did, then the city doesn't have to do anything. However, if the city wants to transform that into what the original intent was when those laws were changed, into an irrevocable trust, then the city council would be required to adopt a formal irrevocable trust. So, as such, I wanted to give the option to city council to see what your pleasure was. You can do one of two things. You can transfer and reauthorize the existing OPEB Trust Stabilization Fund into this irrevocable trust. In the event that city council wanted to do that, I have drawn up this trust, which is fully in accordance and in compliance with Mass. General Law, under the changes in the law. So, if the city wants to set up a formal trust, they would have to adopt this. City council would have to adopt this as an irrevocable trust and adopt the investment policy, because part of that law says that if you adopt an irrevocable trust, you do need a specific investment policy that addresses OPEB.
Thank you, Mr. Demus. First question is Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. Could you explain for number one, investments, had you just stated? And then for number, I think it was three, the trusts, can you explain that so the viewing audience can understand it?
Sure. So, as far as investments are concerned, Mass. General Law is very specific as to what communities can place their excess or surplus funds into, what instruments. They're very reserved. A lot of times, we're limited to interest-bearing accounts, CDs, and the like. You get into trust funds and stabilization funds, and you're allowed to go into state-approved, more long-term investments, but each one of those investments are specifically defined by statute.
Would it be stock at any option, or no? Anything like that?
There are corporate bonds that are included, and there are other derivatives that are included as a possibility. In addition to that, it also says that if the city is bequested a gift, a trust, and the person that's making that contribution specifically says, "I will give you this $100,000 for the use of the library. However, I want this money invested in GE," then the city has the ability to make sure that all of those funds are invested in GE as requested by the person providing it.
So, that would give us the option to?
Yes.
Jump into stock? Okay.
In regards to the OPEB Trust Fund, prior to the change in the law, municipalities, about four years, five years ago, there was a change in an accounting principle. And the accounting principle says you have this OPEB liability, this other post-employment benefit liability, this unfunded liability that's out there on the books. Everybody's known about it. Bond rating agencies knew about it. The readers of the financial statements knew about it. But communities were never required to put it and include it in their financial statements. Change in the accounting principle said this liability is real, it's quantifiable, you have to include it in your financial statements. As such, every community started including it. Some of your more wealthy communities had said, AAA-rated communities said, "Well, if we have this liability, we need to start funding it." And there was no mechanism in place. So, these communities, and again, it was across the country, it's not just here in the Commonwealth, had petitioned their state legislatures to provide them a mechanism in which they could start funding these liabilities. So, the state legislature actually allowed you, and that's what the city did, allowed communities to start setting money aside, specifically to address this unfunded OPEB liability. It's a law, an MGL, that the city embraced, and they set their money aside, and that's what we're currently doing. Right now, that's sitting in, under the terms of the law, in technically a stabilization fund, which isn't a bad thing. It gives the city some flexibility as to what they can do. However, one of the changes, one of the issues that has arisen, because it's a stabilization fund and it's not an irrevocable trust fund, is that external auditors, when they're issuing an opinion on the financial statements, they see this OPEB liability out there, and if a community is setting money aside, just like the City of Everett is, they're not reducing that liability because you've set this money aside. Because if city council decided in five years, "We have this other issue coming up, we're going to reallocate these funds," they can't directly tie it to the liability, because that restriction is only internally based. So, some of the communities said, you know, "We want to be able to tie these funds that we set aside specifically to that liability." So, the laws, the legislature said, "Okay, the only way we can do that is creating a new statute saying that a community now has the ability to set up an irrevocable trust." What that means is that any of the monies that a community wants to set aside specifically to the OPEB liability will go into this trust and can only be used for that liability. And it removes the flexibility from a city council and mayor, should something happen, to be able to use those funds for something else in the time of an emergency. So, the purpose of what I'm doing is, there's a change in the law, and the city needs to make a determination which path you want to go down. If you don't want to do any change, we don't actually have to do a change. But if the city's intent is to specifically restrict these funds related to the liability, then what you need to do is you need to adopt and approve a trust fund.
That being said, and I'm glad that you brought that up, does that, will that affect the AA bonding that we have now, if we do not do that?
It will not.
Okay. So, does it look good towards the AA bondings or AA that we have now to have this?
There's a number of factors that rating agencies will take a look at with a community, and one of them is going to be an unfunded liability. So, there are gives and takes on whether or not a board wants to set this aside. So, right now, the benefit that the city is having by not setting this aside is that it shows up basically as an available source to fund future obligations, not specifically tied. So, that looks very positive to a city. That's one of the issues that bond rating agencies are going to look at. However, the downside is, it's going to show that unfunded liability is being higher, because city council would be maintaining the flexibility as to not using it. So, it's half a dozen to the one.
So, we're in the middle on it. All right.
We are.
Now, just in your opinion, this is a good move. You put it before us, and it would be plausible for the city on both those accounts. And the second account would be the reason why we're doing the second account.
Well, in my opinion, if you're asking for some guidance, from financial guidance to me, then what I would do as a city council is I would adopt the first two policies, because that is looked upon by bond rating agencies.
Sure.
They look at management. They look at management's ability to deal with risks and to mitigate those risks. This is one of the internal controls. This is a mechanism that you can put in place. This looks very positive. There is no requirement by city council to actually take action on this trust fund. That would permanently restrict those resources to that unfunded liability. It's something that the city council could look at at any time in the future. In my opinion, the city council has a little bit more flexibility right now by not changing anything. But that's not a decision for me to make. That's a decision for the city council, which is why I wanted to pose this issue with city council, let you make sure that you're aware of the changes in the law, and give you all of the information I can and the options that you have as to how you want to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guests. On the first policy, the investment policy, just a couple of quick questions. Since Section E, Restrictions, we have the bullet points.
Yes.
It says, "Treasurer shall not at any one time have deposited any bank or trust company exceeding 60% of capital in surplus of the bank of the trust assets unless given satisfactory security." What, in your opinion, would be satisfactory security in those terms?
They would be collateralization guarantees, collateralization agreements with the bank, which we do require from all of our depositories. So, what those agreements are is, you know, FDIC is 250,000 guaranteed on your deposit. The federal government mandates that insurance. We require additional insurance above and beyond FDIC requirements. So, we require the banks to basically take out an insurance policy.
Okay.
And they give us those compensation agreements.
Okay. So, then, in the event that they can't meet their obligations, the insurance policy kicks in?
If a bank were to go under, yes, the city will not lose their funds.
Okay, good. Then, I think it's Section C under Investment Instruments, that's in Long-Term Funds. The bullet points where the treasurer may invest, talks about no more than 5% institution assets, no more than 25% of an emissibility's cash, may be increased for not more than 30 days during times of heavy collection. Would that be tax period, that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other time periods where there would be heavy collection? Is that really it?
Well, the only other time I could see that is actually if we issued bonds, or we issued bands.
And you're expecting money.
And there was a time period in between.
All right. And then, continuing on that second sentence, it says, "Or anticipation of large payments that will be made to the city in the near future." What, by your definition, what's near future? What timeframe? Do we go outside of near future? 30 days, 60 days?
Well, I would say within 60 days typically. It's not, it's interesting, because the MGL that I'm pulling from is very specific on certain areas, but it does give communities some flexibility where it's talking about those timeframes. An example would be when the city receives, and we're very soon to receive, the next payment from wind resorts related underneath a community host agreement. So, this would give us some flexibility to move some money around and make sure that, without taking any risk and assuring that we're fully compliant with Mass. General Law, the treasurer is making best use of those monies. Because not only does it say you can do this, and there's also language in there that says you shall do this. A treasurer would be negligent in their duties under Mass. General Law if, for example, they received, in the city's case, that $12.5 million, and left it in a checking account at 0% interest.
Sure.
Technically, that would be grounds for dismissal. The law says the treasurer is required to make best use of the taxpayer money underneath the terms of this agreement.
Okay.
And that's, language is in here as well, to make sure that whoever is sitting as the treasurer within my finance office understands what their obligations are to the city.
Okay, great. I don't have any questions about the trust investment policy, but on the trust itself, and I apologize, because I looked at these a little while ago, and I made all my notes, and I'm trying to pull it a little closer, but on page five, Article Five, Trustees, 5.1, so, this speaks to what you were saying, that the institutions, they want to see that it's a collective effort between the council, the mayor, financial offices, and the individuals serving would be council president, human resource director, mayor, chief financial officer, and treasurer. In the event of a vacancy, chief of staff will serve until it is filled. This, I apologize for, was there anything in here that talked about how and when and what timeframe the trustee gets filled, the position, in the event of a vacancy?
Well, in the event of a vacancy would be...
One of those individuals.
Let's say, let's say the chief, let's say, for some reason, I separated employment with the city, and the city didn't have somebody in that position.
Okay.
Then, we have a mechanism in place where the chief of staff would step in.
Until a new financial officer comes in?
Until the chief financial officer position was filled, to ensure that you have the five members.
And there was nothing in there that talked about timeframe? Obviously, we would be pursuing that as quickly as we could to fill a position that was void, so.
Yes. And it actually is defined by position, which is why there's no other talk of...
Okay, that makes sense. That's, I had a note, and then I took it off, and that's probably why, because when you started to talk, I knew exactly what the answer was. On page seven, 6.14, when it talks about borrowing and raising money for the purposes of the trust, is this independent of council approval?
No, it is not.
Okay. So, you're still going to require council approval?
Yes.
When you're appropriating funds?
This trust fund, this trust document is fully compliant with Mass. General Law.
Okay.
So, there would be no situation in which anybody within the city could borrow or take on any actions other than what's normally prescribed through city council. This takes no authority away from city council.
Okay. And then, in that same cluster on page seven, 6.1.8, talks about after termination of the trust until the final distribution. Is there any kind of a timeframe in place that talks about once the trust is terminated till final disposition, or just, it is whatever it is whenever it happens?
It is whatever it is whenever it happens. However, when I'm pulling this document together, I was taking a look at numerous other examples from municipalities here in the Commonwealth, as well as around the country, to make sure that I'm not, I'm picking up all best practices. You know, things that we may think of in the Northeast may be different from what, you know, somebody in the Southwest is thinking. However, I can't envision a situation in which this trust would be dissolved.
Okay.
Because that OPEB liability is never going to go away. The only time you would dissolve this trust is if you were dissolving the community itself.
Right. And, yeah, it's not going to happen. So, and the last question I have for you is 6.1.19, where it talks about hiring consultants, actuaries, accountants, attorneys, professionals, et cetera. What's happening now? Is it just your office that's handling that?
Right now, it's just my office that's handling it. There is a requirement, for us to issue, for the city to receive a clean opinion on their financial statements, we have to include this liability in our financial statements. That liability is actuarially determined. So, we are required by Mass. General Law and by accounting principles to have that liability determined by certified actuaries every two years. So, right now, I'm picking that up underneath my professional services within the finance department.
Okay. And that will now become a function of this trust by the trustees?
Right. And right now, I'm the only one reviewing?
Right.
That report. I'm the only one that is taking a look at it, having input, having any say with the actuaries, as well as the external auditors.
Sure.
What this fund would do is it would turn that responsibility over to the trust fund committee.
Okay. Which you would be a member of?
Which I would automatically be a member of.
Or the individual in your position would be a member of. And as competent as you are, and I think you're extremely competent, it's always good to have an extra couple of sets of eyes looking at things.
That's my feeling, which is why I incorporated that in.
Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation. I have no other questions. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, President.
Thank you, Counselor Capone. Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Is there a deadline? One, this has to be voted on?
No. None whatsoever.
There's a lot to absorb, and there's a lot to read, as the counselor at large said. So, if we don't vote on this Monday night?
I'm okay with that.
Can we hold it over for two weeks until we absorb more? And if I have any questions, I'm not looking to hold it up. I would call you up anyways if there's something in there that I picked up.
And I always make myself available.
That's right.
There are no time crunches right now. I want to make sure that all the counselors are very comfortable with this. Again, I feel that they're very important. They are best practices. They're saying what we're doing, we're just committing into a policy. If you want to table these for a month, two months, you want to wait, that's fine, too. There are no time restrictions.
No, I may be ready to vote on this Monday night, but the question was, there is no, in other words, if we don't vote on this Monday night, there's no penalties, obviously. Okay.
The reason why they're being presented to you now is because they finished them.
Right, okay. So, all right, so that's basically my question, to make sure that there was no deadline, and also to let everybody, even the viewing audience, there's nothing being taken away from the counselors. If you need a transfer, I mean, I'm going to repeat it. If you need a transfer, you're still going to come in front of the counselors. You still have to get the vote to get the transfers.
An affirmative vote on any of these actions will not change in any way the existing powers and duties of city council.
Okay. So, I know you said it before. I just wanted to repeat it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Counselor. Counselor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to say, this is very complicated, and you know, we had an audience that came before us a little while back on the taxi captains and the Uber drivers, and we sent it to a work committee, which discussed it paragraph by paragraph. And I can see myself that this is the only way to go with this, because so far, we've jumped around to four different places without even covering the first page. So, I think that we need to somehow organize a proper method in which we should go through this, page one, page paragraph one, whatever it happens to be. I mean, even going back to Counselor McKinnon's comments about the money, or that you explained the money going into the trust fund for the retirement, and you said, "We're going to put this money over here and earmark it for this fund that's an unfunded liability," right?
Unfunded liability.
My question is, why put it there? Why don't you just pay it? You know, I mean, you're saving money over here to put into this count, and this is something that says we have to have cash on hand or something. Why don't you just pay it? Why don't you just put it in there?
I don't have the number in front of me, but the unfunded liability related to OPEB, and I really wish I would have brought that number. I didn't even think about doing that.
Fifty million?
Is well over $100 million.
Yeah, okay. But, you're going, we're holding a million dollars over here, okay? Why don't you just throw it into the fund?
That is, that is a discussion that will go, that would take probably about two hours of me explaining to you, and you will be more confused than when I start, because I have difficulty with it.
I don't think I can hold more confusion.
It's an actuarially determined liability. Technically, we don't even have the ability to take that million dollars and write a check to anybody, because it's based upon the implicit cost subsidy of us providing retiree benefits based upon what we're currently paying in our health insurance. So, basically, the law says that because we offer health insurance to our retirees, we charge our retirees the exact same premium cost, if you would. I know we're self-insured, but that brings it to a whole nother complicated level. But let's just say we're premium-based. If you were 65, and it costs you, if we charged you $500 a month for your premium, we have an 18-year-old that we just hired, we're charging him $500. And basically, what it's saying is that we are paying more for our younger population because we have the retirees included in that. So, it's an actuarially determined liability that we actually don't have the ability to kind of check to for anyone.
Okay. I accept that, but it doesn't make sense to me.
I'm with you.
Okay. But anyway, to get back to my original question was that, why don't we just go through this paragraph by paragraph? I mean, if you don't want to do that, just say so. And I won't do it, because I don't want to hold anybody here all night long. This guy, I can see, takes hours to go through this, as far as I'm concerned. It took me hours, and I was alone, you know?
It took a long time to produce these documents.
I mean, if that's the way you wanted to move forward, Counselor, I would suggest perhaps setting up a work session like that, and if anyone did want to go, they'd be more than welcome to on a separate evening from tonight, if you wanted to arrange time with the CFO and set something up and invite any of the counselors. It's just a work session where not, it's a formal committee meeting. That might be the best way to move forward, if you'd like. Counselor DeFlorio?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that this is, it's something that's very complicated, all right? I mean, let's face it. The audit of the city and explain it for six hours, and we may still not get it. I just said, I want to make sure it doesn't affect us, that we still have the counselors, any council, not just us, still have the right to transfer money, that nothing is being taken away from the taxpayer and our rights, okay? So, as far as when it comes to auditing, and when it comes, it is very, very complicated. That's why I said, I just needed maybe a couple more days, okay, to absorb, because it does take a long time to absorb it. it does take a long time to absorb it. But we could sit here for six days, it doesn't mean after six days, you're going to go out and really understand everything. So we just want to make sure that it is right, absolutely. It, it's right for the, so we don't get sued, that's the right thing to do. But as far as going paragraph by paragraph, I think that, that's, that's a lot. I mean, I, I don't believe we have to go through that ex, you know, that extra time. If we spend the time at home reading it, I believe eventually we will understand it. So that's why I said, I just wanted a couple of days. I didn't mean a couple of months, and I wanted to make sure there was no deadline. So if we have it in our possession for the next couple of weeks, and there are any questions, then we can just call the auditor and ask him, or we can ask on next meeting, and it's not, but to sit and go paragraph by paragraph, I, I don't believe, I don't feel that's necessary.
Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. I mean, I concur with that. A work group, the reason we did, went with a work group with the tax ordinance was primarily because here we had an ordinance that we were creating, and we were needed to review it to make revisions, which we did. We tweaked it significantly. I honestly don't feel that any of us are qualified to tweak the CFO's policy. He's created this, he's, this is his expertise, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't ask questions, absolutely, but the fact that he's gone and created two policies in an area that I've always assumed we had policies, we don't. I applaud the fact that he took the initiative beyond, you know, whether, whether you consider this beyond his regular duties or part of his regular duties, the fact is, it's something that needed to be done, and it was acted on. I have no problem with going through the policies so we understand it better, but I'm really hard-pressed to see that any of us would be qualified enough to, not knowing Mass. General Laws, not knowing the, some of the financial details, how projections work, how the, how the bonding rate, all of these things enter into this, which we all have a, a, a understanding of, but it's not a level of expertise. So I, I mean, I just wanted to state that there's a distinction between what, difference between what we did with the tax ordinance, because we're creating, revising, and making amendments to round this thing out, as opposed to just trying to understand the policies here. Now, having said that, I actually do have a few questions. Again, I've already said how I felt about the two policies. Like I said, I'm more, I'm more surprised that we didn't have one, but I applaud you for taking the initiative to do that.
The only thing I just wanted to add is that we have had informal policies. What we haven't had are formal policies, and that's the distinction I'm trying to make. And what I'm trying to just do is simply formalize our policies to show that we have the best internal controls and that we are fully in compliance with Mass. General Law.
And I think that's great, because I'm a, I'm personally more of a proactive type of person than reactive. Putting a formal policy in place is, is a, is just not in that direction. You know, it's, it's putting it in place in case, so this way, there's no question. What I have questions on, just general questions regarding the, the trust and stabilization fund, the post-employment, employment benefit stabilization fund, and these are, some of this is more for the public purpose. How is that fund currently funded? Again, this is for the public's purpose.
Sure, so, so, sure. So the existing OPEB trust fund is funded from free cash. So the city council adopted a policy a number of years ago, I don't know the specific year, that 50% of free cash, as soon as it's certified by the Department of Revenue, is then transferred over to the various stabilization accounts. There are three. The city has a general stabilization account, a capital stabilization account, and an OPEB trust fund stabilization account. It's titled OPEB Trust Fund, but my point is, it's not a trust fund, and that's what I wanted to make sure city council was aware of. It is just another stabilization account, which is fine in itself, but with the changes in the law, I wanted to let the council know that you do have another option, should you try to go down that route.
Now, what happens to the stabilization fund as it stands right now if we convert it into a revocable trust?
The balance that's currently in the OPEB trust stabilization fund would be transferred into this new irrevocable trust fund, of which the city council would not have the ability to use as a funding mechanism should something happen. However, that transfer would still be required by city council. City council, even if you adopt this trust fund, would still have to vote to take that transfer from stabilization, just like you would any other stabilization account for any other reason.
So if we pass them a three, something to trust, there will no longer be a stabilization fund for that mechanism. The funds, any, any money transferred from free cash after certification would go to the trust?
Yes.
As opposed to the, so we wouldn't be running both of them side by side?
We would just simply be redefining under the terms of the new law that the OPEB trust fund is not technically a stabilization, it is a trust fund, and it is an irrevocable trust fund.
All right, thank you.
And again, my recommendation on the city council action on that trust fund would be to basically, at this time, take no action, and let's see how things happen within another couple of years. As the city builds its reserves and has more flexibility, I think that would be a more prudent time to actually take these funds and put them into a separate irrevocable trust fund that the city wouldn't have the ability to use as a funding mechanism should something catastrophic happen.
So three just creates the trust?
Three would create the trust. In my, my recommendation, I wanted to give you the options, but my recommendation would technically not take any action and to just table it, not adopt that trust fund. But again, that's not my decision. This is a mechanism available to city council based upon actions that city council has taken in previous years. So I wanted to make sure that city council was aware that what you did a couple of years ago has changed. If you want to go ahead and set aside these funds under the terms of the new law with the OPEB trust fund, you would have to take this action. If you don't want to embrace the new law or to utilize the new mechanisms that have been put in place, then you don't have to take any action.
All right, thank you.
Before Counselor Sani speaks, I mean, at this point, after questions are through, I think one of the probably best things to do would be to refer it out without a recommendation, and then at our regular meeting, we can lay it over for perhaps a month, or whatever time the counselors feel necessary to collect what other information they may need.
Would it be the idea to leave it into this, into this committee?
Well, it wouldn't get, if we referred it out with no recommendation, it wouldn't be stuck in committee and have to come back to a committee meeting? You can bring it to our regular calendar and just lay it over.
And why refer it out at all?
We could, it's at your pleasure.
Just refer it to our next meeting of this, of next day of this meeting, this committee at large? Yeah, whatever we want.
Through you, Mr. President. If we, how's this, if we come out and just say that we want it for a month, and then at the council's discretion, they could notify the CFO, we would hold it over just for the month, right? That's what we're trying to do here. So what, what do you suggest?
Would the clerk suggesting that we, that we refer it out of committee with no recommendation, therefore, it goes on our regular agenda, and at that point, you just lay it over for the amount of time you deem necessary? But before we do that, Counselor Sani has some questions as well.
Thank you. I just, you mentioned that we already practiced an informal policy, more or less, that we already have trust, say repo sweeps, CDs, they're already acting on this already. So this is just placing something in policy, so a bond rating would be better, and you have a policy in place versus an informal policy. So that's basically what you're trying to do, is put something in writing that we have...
I, I'm a big, yes, in answer to your question, I'm a big policy guy. I like to spell things out. One of the first things I did when I came here, I certainly had, it's certainly, in my opinion, an area of high risk, it's to make sure that we're being compliant with the law with taxpayer money, so I did take a look, and I found no issues. The city, the treasurer's office was fully maintaining all funds in accordance with Mass. General Law, which is a good thing. I never found anything that required us to do something different. However, I do think it's important from an internal control standpoint and from a management tone standpoint, that if we are going to have policies in place, if we are going to put requirements and expectations on employees and on departments, then we should clearly spell them out and make sure that we're all on the same page. When you have a policy as important as something like this, I think it's important to bring city council in, so that we're sending a message to everyone, including our bond rating agencies and our bondholders, that this is something that we do take serious, and it's not just a mechanism or control that's put in place by the CFO in his departments, but it's something that's being discussed and making sure that we're adhering to Mass. General Law and all best practices by the city as a whole.
I do agree with, I do agree with you putting a policy in place, because I know myself, I do read the bonds that come through the bank, and that we have to look at certain criterias, and one of them is having a policy in place with the towns that they, you know, come out for money and ask for, you know, bids and stuff like that. The only thing I just had to ask was, the amendment you have on one and two about asset allocations, is this saying where they can...
Which pages?
This is on the 15317, the order to accept OPED, probably the...
Oh, the OPEB?
Yeah. The last, last page nine, it shows different asset classes, like domestic equity, international equity. Is that where you're saying that you could invest your money into as a city, that if you wanted to?
Yes, and these asset allocations were taken directly from Mass. General Law. So what I did was, in this table, was just quantify it. So the laws that allowed, that created the OPEB trust funds and the investment funds allow for these, so what I wanted to do was clearly spell them out rather than just in paragraph form.
And this is not necessarily that we would be investing money into these, you'd come to us before you invest any in this different, like international or domestic?
No.
No, you don't have to?
No, it would be, for, for the OPEB trust fund, it would clearly be the, the trustees of the trust funds. However, just like I'm currently doing, there's, there's not enough time in the day. The city does have financial advisors that we have used historically that specialize in Massachusetts municipal investments. So we receive a lot of our guidance from them to make sure that all of our investments are fully compliant with Mass. General Law.
Thank you, I'm all set.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to be clear about one thing. I was going to suggest we go without a recommendation and then deal with it at our regular meeting, but through you to, to our invited guest threw me for a curveball. So I want to make sure I heard what I thought I heard. You're saying that you're not looking for action on actually establishing the trust?
I'm looking for action.
Just no policy statements?
On both policy statements would be, my recommendation is for the city council to approve those two policies as official city council policies, city policies. As far as the trust fund is concerned, you're not, the city is not required to take any additional action because of the change in the law. However, because the change in the law was so significant, I felt in, in discussions with the mayor and the chief of staff, that we needed to have that discussion with city council, given the fact that city council had adopted an OPEB trust fund underneath the stabilization account laws, that there is now a new mechanism that says you can pull it out of a stabilization and you can put it into an irrevocable trust. That is a decision, a determination that's made by city councils. So as such, I wanted to make sure city council was aware that should you desire to do that, you now have the mechanism and the ability to do that. In my opinion, I don't actually think that it would be really in the city's best interest right now to take action on this trust fund. I would table this until a future time. And the reason why I say that is, we're going to get, it, the money that the city has set aside does not lower our liability on paper. We wouldn't be given the credit for putting it there. However, it does show up on the city's financial statements as an available resource, so it's a positive on that side. If you, city council votes to set this into and adopt an irrevocable trust, then the city has no ability to access these funds, because now you are going to have what's referred to as an external restriction. So this money goes in, that's why I'm specifying, it's an irrevocable trust. It's in that trust. Right now, it, the money is set aside, the city council recognized, and mayor recognized that there's a liability out there. It's a liability that needs to be addressed, so you created the OPEB stabilization trust fund, and you're setting a portion of free cash into there. Right now, technically, if something were to happen, let's say we lost our police station and had to rebuild the police station, and we needed all available resources, right now, technically, city council would have the ability by majority, two-thirds majority vote, to reallocate those funds to use it for whatever situation the city's facing. Should you adopt this irrevocable trust, you will not have, you will lose that. So there's a positive and negative, but by not taking any action on the trust fund, you do ma, the city does maintain additional flexibility. We would lose some of that flexibility should you adopt the trust fund.
Sure, and basically, what happens is with numbers one and two on the agenda, it's formalizing your informal policy.
Yes.
And then the trust fund would actually make it a committee of five versus everything falling under your office? Like right now, everything's under your office?
Yes.
Under the trust, it would be a committee of five?
Yes.
Okay.
However, if you adopt the trust, then the city has no ability to set aside, to use those funds in the future.
Right.
And it will be taken away and technically looked as a negative?
Sure.
By the bond rating agencies?
Because it's locked up.
Because it's a lost available resource.
Yeah, it's no longer accessible.
Yep.
So rainy day fund, whatever you wanted to call it. And is there, is there a possibility of having the trust in place, funding that minimally, and still holding a separate account over, or do they have to merge? Like what we're doing right now?
That's an interesting question. I'd have to look into that.
Because we could establish it, fund it minimally, just to have it existing, because, like I said, I think you're extremely competent. You're not going to always be here. I'm not going to always be here. A lot of us, I can always be here. So it's good to have some sort of a formal structure in place, but in the event that you could maintain that separate fund, you'd still have that financial flexibility, you could still access it in time of great need if you had to, but you would still have a trust in place that had some funding that would follow the rules.
I, I had to think through your question for a minute, but yes, in, in answer to your question, yes, absolutely. The city could adopt, city council could adopt this trust fund, put this mechanism in place, and then on an annual basis, quarterly basis, then make a determination as to what funds would be going into this fund. So underneath the city council's existing fund balance reserve policy, the free cash policy, you could still set aside that 15% of certified free cash into the OPEB stabilization trust fund?
Right.
The way we're always doing it, maintaining that flexibility, and then should city council deem fit wanting to put additional monies into this separate irrevocable trust, you certainly could do that as well.
You could. And the only thing that it would do is it'd just create a little bit more work, because you'd be doing your function, and you'd also be having a seat in the panel of five.
Yes.
And it would be requiring council president, treasurer, yourself, mayor, to be sitting on that trustee board in order to deal with whatever funds are in there. But if you, if you create the trust and you have some security in there, but you don't go too far with it so that you lose the flexibility, and you can still bridge the two, you might have the best of both worlds.
Yes.
Not for you, more work for you, but it would be the best of both worlds for the finances.
It, it would be, and I'd be happy to take that on as well, so...
Okay, glad to hear it. All right, thanks.
That's why I wrote these policies.
No other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I say, if there are no other questions, excuse with the customary thanks, and my recommendation is that we send out items one, two, three with no, no recommendation, and then Monday night, we can decide if we want to lay it on the table for a month, two months, or whatever. But between now and Monday, we, we have more time to look at everything, and we'll decide on Monday if we want to lay it on the table.
Motion made and seconded to excuse our guest with a customary thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. And there's also a motion that was made and seconded to refer items one through three out of committee with no recommendation to our next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.